Great, can we all rise for the salute to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America. To this government which stands unafraid, nation under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
May be seated. Just want to do a roll call of the board. So for attendance purposes, Member Allen.
Present.
Member Boucher, present. Member Hefnecker, absent at the moment. Um, Member Anucci.
Present.
Member Karlic.
Present.
Member Kelly.
Present.
Member Umberto.
Present.
And our professionals tonight, we have attorneys stepping in for our normal attorney who's away right now, so counsel is Elise Targhoun, and she is present. And we have Engineer Higgins.
Present.
And we have, I think that's it, for our professionals. Okay, so we need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Member Umberto in second.
Second. I'll second.
Okay, Member Kelly. And just so I can explain to everybody what the purpose of the public hearing is, um, and this is, actually I should have said to reopen because it's continued to today, so we're reopening the public meeting. Just so you know, do not take the silence of the planning board as pro or negative to any comments made. Uh, that's not our role tonight. Our role is to hear from all of you in the public. So what we do is we take all those comments in, and then we just make sure that the applicant, in this case, responds to those comments. Um, and then, you know, we put that together. We consider everything that you say, but it won't be at tonight's meeting, uh, just so you know that. So we'll have that opportunity to relook at things after this, after this evening. So, um, and if you have questions, you can certainly ask them. If they're very simple, we'll answer them. Um, but if, otherwise, if it's an involved question, we just, we'll take it as a board. And, uh, and everyone's always welcome to the board meetings, no matter if it's a, a, a public hearing or not. You are welcome to come, it's always posted on the website. So we'd be happy to have you do that. So the only thing on public hearing tonight, um, is the Monroe Woodbury Islamic Center. And I know we have, um, what I want to do is just have, in case this is new to anybody, or you haven't heard, you know, about the project in any kind of detail, I'm going to ask their engineer, Ryan Nasher, maybe to speak for three or four minutes, um, to, you know, just give a summary. I mean, it's a big project, there's a lot of things, so just give it the, uh, the big picture. And anybody, just so I make mention of this too, if you're going to speak tonight, we're happy to have you speak. We just want you to come out to the podium. And on that podium, there is a, um, if you haven't put your name on the Reddit, some of you did, but I think we asked for the information we need, that's, so when we do the minutes, we have the spelling, who spoke, things like that. So if you would, if you haven't done it and you want to spoke, or speak, you're welcome to speak, but please just put your name and whatever information is asked for on there. Is it address or?
Yeah, name, address, email. And then if you have written comments and want to email them to me, that would be helpful, and they'll go into the minutes, straight into the minutes.
Yes, you can also email the written comments in, so we'll be looking at that, so. Okay, Ryan.
Good evening, Ryan Nasher from Atzel Nasher and Ziegler. We are engineers and the surveyor. Uh, we have present here Amy Mealy, our attorney, our regular attorney. Frank Philippey is, so he's away for vacation, so Amy is covering for Frank. Uh, we have Mohammed Hassan, he's the president for the mosque. We have Steve Esposito, landscape architect, present here. We have traffic engineer, Steve Tarvarkia, uh, he's also here, just in case any question related to traffic, he is here to answer. Uh, thank you for the opportunity, Chairman. I'm going to just go over briefly what we have done so far in this project. I have the plan, and also the fire product also present if needed, just to give you the information. This project went before the planning board several times. Our goal was to really come up with a preliminary plan and hear from the board members and also the neighbor. Uh, over the month, we have made a major revision to the plan. Not to address the seeker, but it's really addressed the traffic drainage, uh, what is the landscape going to be for the proposed, to address the concern from the neighbor. Uh, we also look at the lighting plan. So far, we have done a tremendous revision to really address those comments. Now, we are here tonight to present to the planning board what we are proposing. The current site is a existing mosque. The mosque has been there since, uh, 2015, if I'm not mistaken. And over the years, uh, the congregation grew, okay? They have also the, uh, for the Sunday school, ages between four to 16 years old. So they need, currently there, they have kind of disorganized a classroom. So what they need is really a classroom with the building expansion. Realistically, a new building that can accommodate for the increased congregation, and also for the kids to have a classroom, they could really, uh, learn their religion, basically. So what has been proposed to, is a 14,000 square feet of the proposed building. It, it also proposed a parking lot, total 111 parking spaces. We did the drainage for the proposed building, everything tied to the multiple catch basins, and goes to everything to the Orange Turnpike. Currently, the side is kind of like in a, the middle section is like in a high section there, and kind of at the back, slow back road to the front. But for the proposed drainage, we are taking everything to the front. It's really improved the drainage for the entire neighborhood, okay? Uh, and, um, uh, we did also the very intensive traffic study. Your consultant, traffic consultant, looked at it. They have made some comments, our traffic engineer did changes. And finally, we got the acceptance from the traffic, saying that, hey, there is a condition when the proposed site making a left turn, they have to have a clearance for the landscaping, so it doesn't have any blockage. Our, um, landscape architect did the changes to make sure that those area is clear. Now, um, as we know, this project went to the moratorium, and we faces a lot of hurdles in terms of which plan to follow. But finally, now everything settled down, we have a plan that really would follow for the local law. This plan would require variance. The variance is, is not as significant. What it is, the new code that recommend the parking lot to the back and building to the front. We looked at it, we looked at an alternative plan to see what is the impact, all right? The, the plan that has the current code that's going to meet the code, it really has a significant impact, all right? The way it is, if we have to bring the building to the front, the drainage has to be for the parking lot to the back, it raises the topography by about 20 feet. And it's really going to change the character for the neighbor. Who wants to come out from the back of the neighborhood property? They want to have like 20 feet tall retaining wall, it's more of a commercial, uh, look, look at it. So that's why we asked the board to look at the plan, what is the impact, and make your determination. You have a choice to really approve a plan that really meet the code, but it's really showing more of an impact, or review the plan, accept as is and refers to the variance and go to the ZVA, and then have them look at it, have them look at the impact, and then come back to the planning board for the final. Uh, I have made multiple times with your consultant, Langton Tully. We look at the project very, uh, detailed in terms of the sewer, inside the drainage, and we sit down to see what area we could really improve. And finally, we said, hey, these are the changes to be made. We agreed, we have no objection, we did the changes to the plan. And before I leave the office, I got a comment from, comment letter from David Higgins, Langton Tully. And those are really minor comments, we have no objection, to really accept the changes and then moving forward. So the bottom line is, the plan that we prepared is really satisfy the seeker. It addresses the drainage. It addressed the concern from the neighbor that we, uh, we heard from the neighbor back in December. There's a concern from the neighbor, there's a headlight. It is a headlight now, but when we do the landscaping with the proper screening, there is none. We also look at the lighting, the lighting, we also lower it down to make sure that it really doesn't really impact with the sound in neighborhood. Our goal is really to match the residential look and the neighborhood and make this congregation to practice peacefully and moving forward. We are here tonight, if any other concern that could brought from the neighbor, we are respectfully here, if anything that could be accommodated. We have, the applicant is very likely to work with the neighbor, we are here to listen. If anything that needs to be addressed, we are here to help everybody and moving things forward.
Great, very much appreciated. Do you have, uh, your, your board up?
Absolutely, with your permission, I could really put it up, though.
Yeah, if you just put it on to maybe the side right there.
At the corner there?
Yeah, probably that'd be the best, um, in, in, in the front of, yeah, no, actually back there, because then when everybody's leaving, they can look at it further as well.
Just, I just have a question.
Sure.
And I'm sorry, I'm just filling in for the regular attorney. So what I've heard is, the applicant would seek, not that you will necessarily grant this, but a negative declaration under seeker tonight, with the drainage, with the drainage, shh, with the drainage with the parking in front. But they need a variance for the parking in front.
Right, so we won't be deciding anything tonight.
Okay, so, okay, so I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud, so if, if they go to the ZVA and they do not get the variance.
That's the other part.
They have to do, they have to redo the zoning, or they have to redo the drainage, correct?
They've done both, they have both.
Oh, they've done both, okay.
Yeah, so they've done both, because, so let me just explain for anybody that doesn't, uh, because Elise brings up a very, very good point. And actually Ryan touched on it there, um, very briefly, but, um. Yeah, I think, yeah, so everybody, as many people can see it as possible. But then if they want to see it on the way out, you know, they will come on the side. So, yeah, just the best place you think that everybody can see it, wants to see it. So, uh, what Mr. Nasher was just talking about is that, um, this project came before us prior to, um, the Village of Monroe having a moratorium. So the moratorium shut all projects down pretty much, almost entirely, unless they were existing already, and it was things that didn't, uh, that weren't impacted by the moratorium. And so, uh, really, there was no decisions to be able to make, but the applicant continued to work on their, their project, um, at the risk that the law could change or whatever. Uh, the law did change, and what he was referring to is the parking. This building, if you notice, when you're out on, uh, Orange Turnpike there, has the parking in front, okay? So that's no longer allowed under the code, the parking now has to be behind the building. The only way around that is if the zoning board, which is not this board, gives a variance to allow that to be switched. And what Mr. Nasher was saying is that, um, it would be a greater impact, he believes, on the community to have it, um, according to the way the law is now. So they're hoping for the variance, um, from the, from the board. And, um, and that hasn't come yet, I'm not sure where it's at in the, because I don't know their schedule, if you've been there.
Actually, um, we have been there, and they want to entertain it until this board issues a negative declaration.
Gotcha, okay. Yep, okay. So, so with that, I think that maybe puts a little bit of clarity on it. Uh, once the moratorium was lifted, the law was changed, more plans were drawn up alternatively, and so that's kind of where we sit right now, uh, as far as that goes, so. So a negative declaration is, uh, we refer to as a negdec. It, it, it's really a conclusion from seeker that no negative impact, uh, will be there, or it was mitigated, um, already, so there would be no negative impact to the environment, and so forth and so on. Uh, and that is under our purview to do, uh, and that's what we'll be looking at. But we certainly want to take everybody's comments in, um, first, especially, you know, we don't know what the comments will be tonight, so, um, so we don't envision, I don't, uh, but we'll certainly talk right afterwards as a board, uh, on issuing that this evening, but, um, you know, based on the comments we're going to see. So with that said, we want to open it up to public comment, if you wanted to speak tonight. You know, I don't know how many of you here are looking to speak, but maybe we'll just say, let's try to limit it to five minutes. So in case there's a lot of people that do want to speak, so, you know, we'll try and do that. And if someone has already made the comments, um, you don't have to reiterate them, because we're going to have those comments, and we'll look at all the comments. Having five of the same comment doesn't change the way we look at it. We look at it for what the comment says. So, um, so it just saves time to, to not reiterate, um, and to bring other things up if you have them, which would be, uh, we'd be happy to hear them. So with that, I open it up, and anybody who wants to start us, you're welcome to do it. Yep, come on, just come on down and speak right from the podium. And if your name and other information we're asking for is not on there, please put that on there so we know. And if you don't mind stating your name and spelling it as well.
Okay. Hi, everyone, my name is Angela, A-N-G-E-L-A-O-P-A-R-A-I-W-U. So we reside on number eight Locklomond. And I just want to say, I have no problem with people residing wherever. It's a free word, right? If you can legally acquire it, it's yours. But sometimes we have to consider others. This is my first night coming here, my husband would have come, but he's not in town. Our house is just, if anybody knows that property where the pool used to be, when the old neighbor was there, right now, on their religious day, you can sit on the deck. In the bedroom, the light, in the night, comes. And by the way, last year, we paid $21,000 in taxes. To pay that, and you can't even have some privacy, is that fair? Um, look at Sacred Heart Church, for instance, and the other church over there. Could you see the distance between the residence and where the church building is? Maybe you guys can come and see the distance, you cannot sit on our deck. On Fridays, try coming there on Fridays and see what. But I was thinking this kind of thing should be planned, you know, in a village like this. This is where a, a public park is, this is where religious, um, organizations should be. Again, I have no problem at all with who lives here, I can live with anybody, I can stay with anybody, I have no problem. My neighbors can attest to that, we've been living there for almost 18 years now. I don't have issues with anybody, but this is not fair. The noise, the light, and we don't even have a public park in here. I'm looking at this diagram, the fence doesn't even cover us, it looks as if the fence is behind.
The fence?
Yeah, it's behind, correct?
I'm not sure which fence you're referring to.
Yeah, it's behind, our house will be like on the side.
Oh, where your houses, you mean?
Yes, it does cover us. Right now, I'm telling you, in the bedroom, in my kids' room, you'll be seeing them. If you, even they call, and I tell my children, don't dress up, they go to the bathroom and dress, after paying $21,000 cash a year, you guys tell me, is that fair? Is it fair? And who's going to buy the property when we have all these things there? I could say, okay, I'm moving, let me sell, who's going to buy that? So I, I hope you guys hear where I'm coming from. Look at Sacred Heart, look at the other church, Presbyterian, look at the distance between the property and where people's houses are. And then compare that with the distance with where we live. This is not a purpose-built housing. That was supposed to be a residential house, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody else wants to comment?
There's a lot of people on here. Hi. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Rebecca Minio, I've spoken before the board last time.
Rebecca, just spell your name for us.
Oh, R-E-B-E-C-C-A-M-Y-N-I-O.
Thank you.
My husband and I reside at Three Reynolds Road, Monroe, New York. A property that unfortunately for us, directly about 1431 Orange Turnpike. I just ate dinner really fast, okay? Thank you for again having, giving me an opportunity to speak about this proposed project, even though as a teacher, I should be at home right now, working on my grades, instead of having to come here and speak again, to fight for my home and my property value. After the last time I spoke in front of the planning board, I believe the photo news misrepresented how I feel about this project. I am against how they're currently operating and have been for years, and how they plan to build a huge facility that, with either plan, is going to tower over the surrounding residential properties and extend very close to our property lines. I'm worried that the drainage problem that they've already created will not be rectified. I worry that the noise and headlights at all hours of the day and night will only increase. In hindsight, we probably wouldn't have purchased our property had we known what was going to happen. So who's going to buy it next? Before everyone in print and on social media starts characterizing me as a xenophobe, as they've done before, let me be clear about what kind of people I don't like. I don't like most people. Especially those who will judge a perspective and someone's right to have an opinion, or those that will step on your neck through veiled threats to get what they want. Like I said, I don't like most people. That is why my husband and I were careful to purchase a property surrounded by mature trees and a large, almost one acre lot. We don't like lights and noise, even the light pollution from Town Hall bothers us all night long. What we do like is privacy, forest, peace, and quiet. These main things that we purposely purchased our home for, and have been erased and could get even worse. Here, here are my main complaints regarding this property, how they've interacted with me as a neighbor, and how they run their facility and their future plans. Over the years, they've been quite the nuisance. In 2017, they clear cut the lot of all trees and shrubbery without a permit. I know, because I foiled whether they had permits to do so. At that time, I had to kindly ask them not to throw brush over the fence into the abutting lot. This clearing has resulted in hazardous, increased runoff into my lot and neighbors. The lack of trees on their lot allows headlights to shine directly into our home early mornings, when I'm getting up to get on the thruway, and before sunrise, and late past 10:00 PM. There's also increased noise during holidays, as their children run around the property late at night, and their congregants call to each other across the side yard where they park and open and close car doors. At about the same time in 2017, their congregants started using the side road across another person's lot for egress onto Reynolds Road. They were parking cars there and walking down that road outside our living room windows late at night. I called that property owner to let them know what was happening on their lot. And they had to travel up here to Monroe to install a chain and no trespassing signs. A few years later, their engineers sent a letter to us stating there's a water easement across our property. This led us to seek legal counsel. As there's no such agreement on our deed, their engineers sent the letter in error. The property next to ours is owned by another person who, as of my last contact with them, has never spoken to them. As a neighbor, I researched the deeds and this supposed water easement. The documentation is very fishy about why their deed stays an easement, no one else's does. I've also advised this resident to seek legal counsel. There's a possibility that the easement mentioned on their deed is invalid. Last year, I was contacted out of the blue on social media by a former Monroe Board of Trustees member, Lynn Johnson Seer, to try to facilitate a conversation with her good friends at the center. I'll try to go faster. About this proposed water issue. I then sent a letter to the mayor with screenshots of her solicitation and cruel personal comments towards me. She's since resigned. Days later, members of the mosque property showed up unannounced on a Saturday morning on my doorstep to try to negotiate an easement. A while later, a representative from their congregation was in the lot next to mine, without permission, so trespassing on someone else's lot, with a representative from the Monroe Water Department. These past experiences with this congregation make me very wary of their good faith towards neighbors and whether their proposals and plans will in fact keep the character of the neighborhood intact. They seem to operate, and rather than ask for permission or follow rules, they would rather seek forgiveness for indiscretion. Our privacy and peace and quiet has already been destroyed. We've stayed in our home out of sentimental reasons. We thought living in Monroe was a great value. But now I see with the increased property taxes in neighboring communities comes more zoning protections. All other residents of Monroe in the SR20 zoning area should be aware of what happens with this development and how it could easily happen to them too. But of course, many nearby and abutting properties have already sold. Everyone has noticed the changes along Orange Turnpike and Prestwick with the homes near this property. Only a few homes have not already sold. I'm sure that the board will find it difficult to not approve this project, or their veiled threats of discrimination will become a reality. I only hope that this board does the best they can from Monroe to protect those of us who still pay taxes, vote, not in a block, and want to stay. Please consider the precedent that this project will set in our neighborhood. Here are some further questions to be considered in closing. Has the planning board, as the Historic Preservation Committee, researched this property, residential structure, and its significance? This is a point I raised earlier in my comments in December. Can they show exact elevations and drainage? How will the lot elevations change if they get approval? Exactly how do they plan on mitigating runoff from a 20,000 square foot structure? Runoff is already a huge issue in the back, along Prestwick, since they clear cut the trees, it just floods. If approved, how long can neighbors expect to listen to heavy machinery and dirt flying through the air? Do they have a timeline for construction? Where is their water supply for this facility? Where is the sewer? The traffic study was done considering a very small congregation, like 100 people. How will the traffic be impacted as word spreads and their congregation grows? I see many Google Maps reviews already from transient people who stop in to check out their services. Some are not from Monroe or even Orange County residents. I see many congregants here tonight. What percentage of the congregation does this represent? They say there's a small congregation, but they have a large temporary tent set up for over a month on their property now. And certainly, there are many people here, so what is it? A small group of worshippers and low traffic, or a large group that will continue to grow? Or is it just whichever numbers suit their purposes? Do they plan on having a call to prayer? They haven't for many years, will this change? Have they spoken to the neighbor about the existing fence, will it remain? What will the height of the screening trees be at time of planting? Where will they go? Have they changed their plan for the exterior finish of the building to be less light reflective? That's all I have so far. Again, to the board, thank you for your time and consideration. I hope that you consider this project and its impact on the neighboring residences as if it were your own.
Thank you. Other comments?
Hi, my name is Nee Morbani, N-E-E-M, last name Morbani, R-A-B-B-A-N-I. I have been a member of the Monroe Woodbury Islamic Center since I moved here at the age of 10. I have loved this aura of this town so much, I actually came back. And I'm a pharmacist here, so I might have met some of you in the Walmart pharmacy. Um, with that being said, um, what is missing to me in this community is the religion aspect. So for all the years I have been here in school, I've seen my friends, um, practicing Easter, going to St. Hearts, running around, um, celebrating that, and that was their day with Easter. So I, I always felt that I should feel the same for our Islamic holiday of Eid. So with that being said, with the noise complaint of our religious holiday, we have to, it's the same. So if we're comparing Hanukkah to Easter to Eid, that is the day that all the kids are running around. are running around. Everyone is happy. It's their big holiday. So if we think about that in comparison, they should be treated equivalently. So with that being said, why should this community have to drive 30 minutes to Middletown or Rockland to experience that same joy? So with all the comments I was mentioning before about the lights and the noise, think about where we are now. We're in a house that's breaking down. Every step you make, it's creaking. The whole point of this project is to fix those, is to fix better, make better lighting, make better windows, so we're not disturbing one another as a neighbor. So I'm here today, not even for myself, but the future kids as well, because this is something that should be here for the future generations to enjoy. And I understand with the neighbor's complaint, with that being said, but it's more than a house of worship. It's like a sanctuary. It's a second home for all of us here. So we should all work together to see how we can mitigate these problems. Again, like the first speaker had mentioned about her kids feeling uncomfortable, but that's not gonna go away. That house is there. That house is ours. We will be there, and we will continue trying. So that's a problem we will have to fix. So how do we fix that? The house isn't, we aren't just gonna go away, so that problem won't just go away. So we need a better location. We need a better setting. With that being said, I think I would like the support of everyone here to think about how we can fix the problems, not just make the problems go away. That's all I'd like to say. Thanks, guys.
Hi, my name is Pervez Khan, spelled P-E-R-V-E-Z, last name Khan, K-H-A-N. I'm actually one of the founding members of this mosque. And I just wanted to let you guys know that I've been living here for the last 18 years, blessed with five kids, all of them going through Monroe Woodbury High School. And one thing what we are missing, we had been missing for these kids, and talking about me and community members here, is that we did not have any place. We had to go 17 miles either to Middletown or 17 miles to Suffer. So we needed a place for the kids to give them the religious and cultural background what we wanted. So we needed a place. So this is the place as a community got together and got it, and we are trying to build it. Definitely, we are taxpayers, citizens, same as all of us. And we like to be careful about our neighbors, for sure. Okay? So we had actually similar concerns in Middletown Mosque when it was built, the privacy. And we had to put those privacy fences and so forth, right? The trees, just to make sure that we don't bother our neighbors. Same thing will be over here also. That's a commitment of us to the community here, because again, we like, we are all taxpayers, we are all caring members of this community, and we will be all, we like to live together in this community. The second representative mentioned about, she is here in the neighboring place, and she mentioned about the community, size of the community, or the growth. So she must be already observing that, how big the community is, or what's the frequency of those people who are visiting and praying over here. So it's no different than any of the church and synagogue, what we have in the community. It's a similar numbers, okay? And we only think what we like to have is a turbulent neighborhood and have a friendly neighborhood with all the community members and a place for our younger generations, upcoming generations, okay? So that's the whole purpose of it. And this community has been here and growing and established, well-established and well taxpayers, and we are the same contributors to the community. So that's all what I like to say, okay? And definitely, we are here for the longer run to live as a good neighbor. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Malik Ahmed, M-A-L-I-K-A-H-M-E-D. Good evening to everybody. I am also, as previous my brother said, I am the founder member of Monroe Woodbury Islamic Center since 2010. And we've been from the place of the town to start, rent the place from that renting place for 10 years' lease, for all the effort we're going on to bought this place. And we've been here, and we're trying our best to work with the neighbors, and that's our, it's not just our, it's our duty for religious point of view, Islamic point of view, religious point of view, neighbor is the priority. So everybody knows in our community, and that's important. So importantness is there, but as well as, you know, we have to do a lot of things for our religious place. For example, we have to teach the kids, that's our future generation. We are going to make them the good human being and good citizen of the country, because if they are not going to learn the religion, then they are going to be beggar bound. So this is very important for anybody to have the religious education. Like you see that here in 17-plus synagogues are around the area, 27-plus minus churches around here, beautiful churches, beautiful. And I know the Father David Ryder very well from the Sacred Heart Church and good friend of mine. And as well as there is a Methodist, Episcopalian, as well as, and I believe me, two years ago, I was invited to have a speech on the Sacred Heart Church on Thanksgiving Day. So that's how I have very close relation with them, and they're very comfortable, and they love that we are here. I can show you the texts of them and the cooperation which we gave them and with every respect, and you know, sometime the funeral, some other thing. So it is very close relation with us and Sacred Heart Church and other one. And myself, I'm living in this, you know, 30-plus years, did business, I have the channel of the store, most of the people, they know that one from that one, a lot of people. Even though the neighbor around here, except the lady, most of the people, I know that one, and they came, and sometime, you know, we had a discussion, and I did personally tell them, whatever their requirement is, the greenery was that one that if you take the trees, I said absolutely that is gonna happen, just give us the time. And during that time, when it comes, we are going to take care of everything. It's not just, and they are on hold for that one, so we go. And the first neighbor is the Patrick. Patrick, I know him very well from the, you know, from my business, very much. And he's right there. In the Christmas time, he has more lights than anybody. So he's there, he loves that one. Absolutely. Last time, the tree fell, and before he was saying, yeah, this is the tree, this is the interesting and the funny thing I'm sharing with you. The tree was, he said, Malik, you know that tree? Before he was saying, ah, that's my tree. I said, okay, this is your tree? We were just a friendly discussion. So the last storm, the tree fell and the big, huge branch. I call him, I said, Pat, what happened now? The tree? Who's gonna pay for this one? He said, that's yours. I said, no, it's mine, that's yours. But what happened? We call the friend and everybody, and we got it. I said, he said, I will share. I said, don't worry about sharing, we'll take care of that one. So we took care of that one. And as well as the other side was the, there's another, our Jewish friend was there, and his tree fell down as well as in our property. And I went, and I talked to them, and Mr. Goldman was very nice and kind, and we talked. And we have the people there. So he said, okay, fine. I said, we'll take care of your, this tree. And there was a huge tree also, but only thing, the stump, he said, I said stump, I said, I'm not gonna remove the stump, stump, you have to do it. Rest of we take care of it. So these are the two neighbors. And the third other neighbor, IT guy, Mr. Mike, and he came in our masjid one day, and we have, you know, the month of Ramadan, the feast. So he was enjoying us, and he was very, so almost I know most of the people here, and across the street, the big house, the fellow, he offered us that, you know, when I'm gonna sell, I'm gonna sell to the you guys. He was there. And then since we are there, property prices have gone up, and real estate people, they know that one. Everybody made $200,000, $300,000, and right now, right after bad people, they buy the house, and because of the people coming in this area, the situation is changing. As the brother said, 17 miles, we have to go down 17 miles of, now the things are different because people coming and the kids learning, and they love this area. Monroe is the thriving area in the future. So this is what right now, we want it. We want this one, and we are the equal people, just like everybody else. So we have, we request you, and we, that please help us to build this masjid, and this is our desire of 30 years, desire, we love it, it's a passion. It's just a passion that, you know, we want that masjid to build nicely. So this is, we want to convey this one to you that, you know, just help us with this one. So that's all. Thank you so much. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This is my first time doing a public hearing, so I'm a little bit nervous, so bear with me, please.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. If you really care, you would show up and show your support or whatever. So I'll begin right now.
Start with your name.
Oh, I'm so sure. My name is Tuan Khan. I just recently moved to Monroe, like I said, two years.
And spelled lastly.
I'm sorry. My last name is Khan, K-H-A-N. Moved here about two years ago. Best decision I ever made for me and my family, best thing I ever did. Again, I wrote what I wanna say. Good evening, board members. Again, this is my first time addressing a public hearing, and I appreciate your patience. Again, my name is Tuan Khan. My family and I have been a proud members of Village of Monroe, a community for the past two years. It has, again, it has been one of the best decisions we made. So tonight, we gather to discuss the proposal for the new Monroe Woodbury Islamic Center. Currently, the existing house of worship is a state of disrepair, which is not benefiting of our beautiful village. It is impairment that we approve the construction of the new mosque, and it is disheartening to see our small community to build a center that reflects our value of diversity. In the past of the board meeting, the engineer has demonstrated this new house of worship will not pose any harm to our community in terms of traffic, lighting, or noise. Claiming that the mosque will negatively impact our community lacks evidence. In fact, study has shows that property value tends to increase when house of worship is established nearby. So therefore, I encourage you all to approve this project and let us not miss this opportunity to showcase our community, our pride in diversity. And that's all. And I wanna thank you for your time, and God bless you all.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mubien Ashraf, first name M-U-B-E-E-N, last name is Ashraf, A-S-H-R-A-F. Been living with my family, mom, brothers and sisters in Monroe since 2004. I graduated from Monroe Woodbury High School, and, you know, we love it over here, love it so much, we haven't moved in the last 20 years or so. So we started out this mosque back in 2010, I believe, when me, my brother Fadi, and over here, we have a couple other brothers, we were there and praying alone, just me and a couple other people. And slowly, slowly, you know, the congregation got bigger and the space ran out. So then, you can see the commitment of the people in the community, shipped in $5, $10, $2, $1, whatever they had. It's not funded by the government, it's not funded by any organization, it's just people out of their blood, sweat, money that they came out of their pockets, hard-earned money. And, you know, they funded it so we can have a place that looks beautiful, people passing by, if you guys wanna come in, Ramadan, 30 days, people are fasting, we have a feast, you can come in, any creed, any culture, any religion, there's no judgment at all. And then, you know, we have all these guys over here that were, you know, ladies as well, they wanna have a place that they can be proud of. Somebody driving by and be like, oh, look at this, what is this? This beautiful building. And as far as the neighbors, we respect the neighbors. And, you know, of course, the neighbors have concerns. When we moved to Monroe, I live in Meadow Glen, there was nothing there. Bailey Farm Road was a farm, and we've seen it change, Target, Walmart, and we've seen the traffic, and we've seen everything else. And as human beings, we learn to adapt, you understand? And I mean that very respectfully. Change happens, and we learn that we have to adapt according to change. And we've got excellent engineers, we have the board members that are willing to work. You know, they're not saying, oh, no, no, we need something right here. You guys want something? We're willing to do it, as long as everybody's happy, you know? And they can get a place where they can worship, they can bring their families, they can have some fun, and, you know, go about their life. As far as, you know, one of the persons before me commented on property taxes, listen, I pay property taxes, and I complain as much as you guys do, you understand? It comes quick, the bills are in the mail before you pay the old one. And everybody here, I believe they have beautiful homes, they pay taxes, they pay income tax, property tax, school taxes, you name it, we all do. So this is just something that's close to heart and, you know, close to culture, community. I have two daughters, and I want them to sense some kind of culture, some kind of values that I was brought up with, you understand? So if we have to drive 30 minutes or 45 minutes away to go and teach them that, that's less of an incentive, you know? Like my daughter says, the park is close by five minutes, but I tell her the mosque is 45 minutes away, or the Middletown Mosque has a playground, this one doesn't, not that I know that this one will, but, you know, they're close, my siblings are here, so it makes it a lot easier. So we would appreciate if you guys would take this into consideration, because this is something like, this is not a business, it's not a house, that, you know, okay, let's go build a house somewhere else. We all worked very hard to purchase this property, like I said, $1, $2, $5, whatever anybody was willing to give. And for the last five to 10 years, or, you know, however many years we've been here, we chipped in money to fix the place. My brother, I believe, not that I'm bragging about it, I believe Mr. Malik can tell you, my brother paid for the carpet. Somebody else might have paid for the electric, somebody might have paid. But now they're chipping in, they wanna do something more beautiful, something where they come in, like this town of Monroe Town Hall, it's beautiful, and we're having a good time sitting here, and that's what we wanna do for the community. And I'm sure you guys will take that into consideration, and the engineers, and all the board members and everybody else are willing to work with the neighbors, and any problem they have, we're willing to address. I wouldn't wanna walk out of my house and be, you know, spooked away, or I wouldn't wanna walk into my bedroom and see a headlight shining right in my window. I wouldn't like that. So I wouldn't like it for myself, neither would I like it for my neighbor. So any issues you guys have, I think they will address, and thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Fatih Sulaiman, F-A-T-H-I, and last name Sulaiman, S-U-L-E-I-M-A-N. I came to Monroe, which is my town now, I always brought to you Monroe, in 1999. My kids graduate from Monroe Woodbury High School. I have three kids graduate, and they are, some of them finished college, some of them still in college. And I've been conducting business in the town, Monroe, everybody know Monroe, Monroe Golf. I was the manager there from 1997 until 2013. And all these years, I have respectful, honest relationship with all my clients. And I moved to, next to Army Navy in Harriman after Cambaland, they come and they said, we're gonna do a beautiful building. You don't, you cannot handle this business no more. This is too small for you, we need to build a bigger station. So at that time, I couldn't afford to build a good station, and I accepted to leave. And I moved to Harriman, next to Army Navy, I opened my business, and thank God, up to now, I'm in business, and I have repeated customer. I don't advertise, and I don't pay money to advertise. Like, I'm not speaking about this, I'm saying that most of the people I know, they are hard-working people. We love to have masjid in the area, and thank you so much.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mohammed Hassan Mia. I am the current president of Monroe Woodbury Islamic Center. We call this center as M W I C. I am voluntarily serving at M W I C for the last fourteen years. I am one of the founder member. M W I C is a nonprofit organization and a religious place of worship. We apply to the planning board, Villas of Monroe, for approving the construction of a new mosque at fourteen thirty-one Orange Turnpike, Monroe, New York, one zero nine five zero. M W I C is facing delayed approval by the planning board due to the newly adopted laws. M W I C appeals to the joining board, Villas of Monroe for variance. If I go back, how we started, it was two thousand and ten. We started in a rental place, address five eighty-one Route Seventeen, Monroe, New York, one zero nine five zero. As the community grew over the years, charitable donation assist the management of M W I C to purchase a property in October two thousand and fifteen at the current location. I want to say something here, why we bought this place? Why not other place? We looked around the whole area and we found this place, which is two point five acre of land. And we checked with the attorney, Helip Lipman, that is that allowed to make a prayer place? And he checked the paperwork and he checked with the county as well. He said that this is the place in the township has twenty, has a twenty, I think. And five things is permitted in this place. One of them has a prayer place. That was the only reason that we bought the place, otherwise not, because this is people's money. We have no right to waste one dollar. So we confirm that this is the place we can build a mosque. Going forward, uh, August two thousand and twenty-two, our civil engineer, architect, landscaping engineer, lighting engineer and traffic engineer, they worked together and submitted an application to the planning board for demolition of the existing structure and construction of a new mosque. We learned at the time that the auditorium was in effect. We asked for the waiver. And we got the waiver, uh, two thousand and twenty-three September. During this period, which is May two thousand and twenty-three to November two thousand and twenty-three, the planning board reviewed all our documents. And the date of November twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-three was announced for the public hearing, which was moved to December eleven, two thousand and twenty-four, public hearing. We were informed to approach the joining board to seek variance against the new court. Our appeal to the joining board is scheduled for hearing on June eleven, two thousand and twenty-four at eight P M. Our architect and civil engineer have put together beautiful design for the building that will not only serve the culture and social needs of the community, but will also add valuation to properties in the neighborhood and township. To add convenience to the immediate neighbors, we plan to put enough fill and plant more trees so that the water drainage will be more efficient and will reduce the destruction from light. I want to add something here, which is not in the paper. We cut the tree. Why? It's a question of safety. When we moved this place, two thousand and fifteen, we saw lots of trees, even you cannot park there right, very big tree. And those are falling part of the land. So we decided that for the public safety and to park, we need to cut the trees on the center of the place, not around the, you know, in between neighbor and us, those still there, only to make a parking. And for the safety of the people, we cut the tree. And when we did that, engineer from the Villas, they came, the inspector, uh, came. We, we did everything with the permission. And from there, so far, there is no incident. Lately, one tree fall down as Malik mentioned. We also cut it down by own cost. We did not ask no neighbor to do that. We always think about the safety of the people. That's our job. We don't want any lawsuits. So we did some other stuff also for the safety purpose. Some people coming here, they're very old. They having difficulties to walk. And parking is a big problem here. It's not a flat land. There was an electric wire above the ground and there were three poles. That was also another problem. If there is a two wind, anytime fall down, people will die. And we had a very small budget. We have no money what to do. We requested people that we want to put those wire under the ground instead of above the ground, which is very dangerous for the people. We did it. So slowly, slowly, what we're doing, we think about the safety of our own people as well as the neighbor. We want to keep a very good relations with our neighbor as well. We love them. We want have, you know, to come to our place when we have a Eid festival and others. We are, you know, nobody, you know, isolated from here. We are all together. While we are fortunate to have beautiful churches and synagogue, you will feel bad when you look at the very poor condition of our mosque. Anytime, anyplace, we will fall apart. Now thinking about the community, in this community, how well behaved we do with our neighborhood that we don't need to mention. But if you can justify by yourself, when you go to the local hospital, our people are working there. Pharmacy, she said, Ram Rabbani, you will see how nice you behave. Monroe voluntary ambulance, Monroe fire station, Monroe library, car service, shopping centers, you will see how well behaved you get from them. We are the same people. We want the peace of the community. We will work together. If they have any problem, we will definitely solve the problem. We will continue behaving well with our neighborhood. That's for sure. Your keen support of the planning board, consistent encouragement and timely approval would help us realizing a dream that the M W I C community has cherished for so many years. Any further delays in the construction of the mosque will add to the financial burden to the people who is paying a high tax as well as other people paying the same. Thank you for your time and kind, kind consideration for the opportunity to share my thought.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Rakshinda Islam. Uh, I have a two son. I raised. Rakshinda, R A K H S H I N D A. Rakshinda Islam. Uh, good evening. Uh, I moved here two thousand and one and I raised my two son here. They went to the pantry school and they graduated from the Monroe Woodbury School. And my youngest son went to the this, uh, the mosque is gonna be built, Insha Allah. So my youngest son went there and her son also. It was an animal preschool that time. So it is, uh, that time it was no problem. There is a traffic. Everyday school is there. There is a, you can find out. So we are emotionally involved also. Uh, I hope so. We're gonna get that, everything. And that's I'm to say, my son went to that, uh, preschool. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mohammed Abasi. M U H A double M A D, A B B A S I. I just recently moved like two thousand and twenty in this town. I have three kids. They're going to middle school. I love this town. I love this place where we worship. And I heard about the neighbor. And all the religion, I think, they believe the prophet says, our prophet says, the, the, the neighbor have lot of rights. Even we can give them property. But if the neighbor have any problem, that's the issue. That's why we're building a new beautiful building and they're gonna take care of all this, the lights and stuff. Right now is a house, so of course, this is, that's why we're spending so much money to build a beautiful place and it's good for the town and good for the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nedal Abirshad, N E D A L, last name A B U I R S H I D. Um, I've been living in Monroe for the last twenty-five years, having born and raised four kids in the district. I just wanna make it very brief through to the ladies comments, the demographics are changing. Uh, a lot of changes in the area, in the county, in the country, in the world. The world has become a very small place and we have, within ten hours, you could be anywhere in the world. We have to learn to accept each other, to respect each other. And this community is in dire need of a place of their own. I live up the road in Coffee Road. And I know, just like other Muslim groups in the country, that they have their own. And I heard that gripe from others as well. They need presentation. They need their own place. And I'm sure they're gonna cater to every neighbor in the area, all around the mosque, and giving him what they want. And they're gonna alleviate any problem that's gonna arise in the future. That's why they're spending a lot of money through, uh, engineer Ryan and his firm to address all issues. So please consider that and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, if you come back up. I just wanna remind anybody that's gonna speak or if you already didn't, didn't put your name on that sheet, please do that for us.
Okay. A N G E R A, last name O P A R A. So I just wanna make myself clear. Maybe I should itemize. So here are the issues. Number one, I have no issues with anybody. I can live with anybody. Currently, the issues that we have, noise, lightning, um, erosion of our privacy. Because on Fridays, you can't sit on the deck. If we decide to put a swimming pool behind the house, it will be distracting them, you know? So those are the issues. I just wanna make it clear. He said something about taxes. If you bought a gallon of orange juice for two thousand dollars and somebody comes by and pour a bottle of water into it, you won't be happy, would you? So I just wanna make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ahmed Salha, A H M E D, last name is S A L H A. I've been living in Orange County for about forty-five years. Then we have no mosque. We had, I had to drive to New Jersey, forty-five minutes to pray. Now we have an opportunity. Now, Masha Allah, we have in middle town, we have in New York mosque. Almost every town in United States, they have a mosque. Why not Monroe? Look behind you. What is it said? In the God we trust. What's wrong building a house? God's house. That's what we call it. House of Allah. You can reject it, it happen. Right? As far as the neighbor complaining about slight things cannot be fixed or can be fixed. Prophet, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, Prophet Muhammad, he teach us to take care of the seventh neighbor. Imagine, not a next neighbor, after and after and after. Seven, seven neighbors on, on the road. How kind. So if our neighbor have a problem, we can fix it. But the house of God here to stay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Malik Ahmed. I'm, uh, his, I'm Malik Ahmed's son. And I was born and raised here in Monroe, uh, New York. And what I would like to say is that this, uh, plan is not just for one person or another. This is for all the Muslims, including, including the kids. We need this for our future to learn about our religion. Like the synagogues, you can see, they have beautiful quality, uh, a lot of people coming there. Same thing with the churches, big, good quality. But look at our masjid. It's, it's not, it's pretty, really old and not in good condition. If we get your support, we'll be able to build this masjid and Insha Allah, this will be a great masjid for right now and the future generation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Hussein, Hussein Refai, H U S S E I N, E L R I F A I. Uh, after all the talks and all these things, I've been living in Orange County for twenty-five years. I live in Greenwood Lake actually, but I come and pray here and for, for many, many years. What we're trying to do is not trying to like impose any things on anybody or build something that nobody wants. We're trying to work with, what we wanna do is try to work with everybody, everybody, you know, be happy. We're trying to build the, like, you know, improve the lives of our community. And when we do that, it's gonna improve the lives of the bigger community because we're part of this whole American community. So, you know, it's for the neighbors and the concerns, nobody's gonna ignore these things. I think we, they talked about it and they said the engineers are looking at it. So nobody's gonna come and say, okay, no, we're gonna do this and we're gonna listen, not listening to this or that. You guys are gonna decide and other, you know, groups are gonna decide about these issues, the lights, the privacy and all these things. So it's not like we're gonna come and say, okay, no, we're building this building here. So it's not like we're gonna come and say, okay, no, we're building this building here and we're not gonna take, we're not gonna accommodate anybody's concern unless all that we ask you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, we're Ursula and Robert Schimmel. We live at Seven Maidstone Lane. Our property abuts Rebecca's and we're diagonal from the current, the mosque. I, we fully support what Rebecca has-
Could you spell your last name? I apologize.
S C H I M M E L. We fully support what Rebecca has said. When it, when we have heavy rain or any kind of heavy snow or whatever, the back of their yard is like a flood zone. It's like a river. And the way it comes down is, that is since the trees were removed. And I, I'm a homemaker. So we moved here 10 years ago in 2014. We moved here because first my brother lived here. This Prestwick Road Drive was very quiet. We come from a quiet town in Connecticut. We wanted that for our two boys. When we bought the house, the realtor had said that that house, which is currently the mosque, was owned by two elderly couple. It was a farm. And that, you know, it was quiet, not knowing that it could be turned into something else. So that's fine. But now over the time, yeah, we've seen many cars in our backyard coming down the hill. Sometimes abutting when it's very crowded, our fence line. There's a flood, two floodlights at the back that peer right into my kitchen, into our back area where we, when we have the windows open or the shades up or anything. So we, what Rebecca is saying is, it's a flood. It's horrible. And we don't want that happening. If they redirect everything and it starts to drain into our property or goes into our, floods our basement or something, we're gonna have a big problem. So I don't know how the drainage is gonna work out, if it's gonna, you know, you can do drainage, you don't, won't know until it rains. And every time it rains, it's horrible. We've taken photos, we've, because we see it. We see it going right through and we have a little side, we have a little sewer thing between our other neighbor. And that's where the water is going into. It goes directly, it's going through, through the fence and luckily that thing is there. Otherwise, I don't know where that water would go. And we have plenty of photos.
Just a last statement. I'm not against any religion. I respect religion. I moved into a residential area of peace and quiet. And that has been turned upside down. That's it.
And we don't, we're not taking your dream away. We don't want that. But we're, we're in a middle, we're all residents. We, we're homes. We're primary homes. This is not my, my vacation home. This is our primary home that we live in. And, you know, we've been discussing, you know, we're gonna wind up moving, you know, because this is really not what we set out. If I wanted to have a home, I would have picked one over by Sacred Heart or somewhere else. This was very quiet. It was all woodsy. There was the trees and it was beautiful. And now it's a little bit, it's changed, to be honest, the scenery. When I look out my kitchen window, the scenery has changed. And that's not what we had planned for our life, for our home, when we moved here to Monroe. And that's, that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So my name is Omar Abu Shaheen. O M A R A B U S H A H I N. I just wanted to say that I go to the, to Sunday School every Sunday, well, I try to. And I see some kids that come like once and they don't come anymore. And I think that's because of how the mosque looks and how big it is. So I think if we made it bigger and more attracting, more kids would come and learn about their religion more. So I know that we learn very valuable things about our religion in Sunday School and I just wanted more kids to experience that. And because it's so small now, I thought maybe if we did the plans and made it bigger, more kids would come and learn more about their religion. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
So I have all the things, okay?
Okay.
Do I have to sign this?
Yeah, if you didn't put your name on there.
Well, there's a lot of speakers. You have another one? It's already filled out.
Yes, flip it over.
All right, no problem. I just want to add this. Unfortunately, a lot of people learn about our religious through news. You know what I mean?
Can you get the quiet down in the back, please? Thank you.
Unfortunately, people learn about our faith, our religious, you know, via news. Not everybody's from their own uneducated opinion. So I believe with this new mosque being built will be a great opportunity where you could experience firsthand to learn about our culture, not only culture, religious, and find out who we really are. So you create your own opinion from a straight fact. And as I were hearing about the parking situation, as you can see, it's really bad over there. Parking situation is bad. By building this new mosque, I believe it will resolve all the issues our neighbors are having. And I believe it worked out formally, you know? As taxpayers, you know, I really want this mosque to be happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
If the public is done speaking, I'd just like to address the board very quickly before asking Mr. Nasher to answer some of the questions that were raised.
Okay. I'm not sure we want to do the answers tonight for the questions.
Okay. May I just state a couple things right now?
I just wanted to add something.
Okay.
I don't know if you want me to say my name again?
Yeah, just say it.
My name is Mubeen Ashraf and I spoke earlier before. So one of the members of the congregation just pointed out that these are pictures, her son actually went to the same building before becoming a mosque. We're told it was a farm, it was a preschool. When the mosque or MWIC purchased the property, it was an existing preschool with people coming in with their kids going also. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was a little group.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Amy Mealy. I'm repres, I'm here representing the mosque tonight in lieu of Frank Phillips, who's away. I just learned that we're on the ZBA agenda for June 11th. We were put off, obviously, to come back here to you to hopefully get a negative declaration, which I know you all know this, but for the public's edification, a negative declaration is not an approval. It's not a preliminary approval or final approval. It just gives us the chance to go to the zoning board of appeals to see if this plan that we think mitigates some of these problems will do the trick. And we can address every issue that was raised here. In fact, we already have in the plans, but you don't even need to hear it from us. You can hear it from your own professionals who's reviewed them and I think agrees that we've addressed them to the best extent that we can. So I just ask that, you know, if you're, if you're not inclined to hear it tonight, I understand, but then we'll be all put off from the ZBA for another month. And at the ZBA, everybody with an opinion will be entitled to come and speak. And then we'll be back here again for preliminary and then final. And they'll have a chance to comment on that as well. I just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome. Are there any other questions at all? Or comments? Okay, then we need a motion to, I think we're ready to close the panel.
I know, a motion to close is here.
Okay, remember Kelly just made it, but give it a second.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It's closed. I'm not sure there's anything, Ryan, you'd be the best one to ask, that you, you know, that you need to bring before the board.
Sure, yeah, I could just like, you know, just make some summary. Just for the record, we have the consultant here, Steve Esposito.
I see him.
He made a great plan. And I really want your permission just to present to everybody what is the landscaping. There is a lot of confusion, what is there now and how the plan gonna look like, okay? I took all the notes from the neighbors, okay?
Yeah, I think that'd be appropriate.
Yeah. And then, yeah, I think I really want you-
Yeah.
-to get your permission just to show it, Steve.
Good, Steve, you're up.
How it's gonna look like. That really resolved a lot of confusion. And any other things, then I'm here to answer. You could do that.
Jeff. You're up, we do have to do that.
Yeah.
Steve, just real quick, in order of business, we need to open the regular meeting. So we need a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion, open up the regular meeting for this evening.
Okay, member Umberto. Second. And member Ainurji, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is opened.
Good evening, Steve Esposito. Engineer, I'm, this is a project. As we discussed in the workshop last week, we, for a couple of things that we really zero in on to help mitigate some of the issues that we're currently having in this process. We've been to a number of, a number of the caring, you know, either this board or the zoning board of appeals. There's orange turnpike, it's oriented, it's the proposed, preferred parking lot in front of the building, proposed mosque in the back of the site. The perimeter of the site has some disentertation, distant trees. We worked with the engineer to modify the grade plans and we can keep at least 12 of the existing trees. They're in decent shape, they're 10 to 12 inch caliber. There's also off-site, that's a part of previously approved application, which was on Monroe with the state's subdivision. This is, this hatched area here, which is a joint property, is a 30-foot buffer that you can't clear trees. So there's some existing, some existing seed yards there, off-site. And then there's also another buffer along the 50-foot buffer as well, as part of that originally approved application. I think that's enough for it. Along, along this property, we're keeping 11 of the existing trees and there's lots of trees here that we're gonna clean up and keep. What we've done along orange turnpike is to kind of create a street scape of existing shady trees, you know, red maples. And then along, in between the trees, we're gonna be a hedge throw to help screen the parking from orange turnpike. Along the curators of all these trees, we're gonna propose evergreens. There's the, there's types of evergreens, they're deer resistant, relatively fast growing trees.
Steve, how tall are they when they're planted, according to your plan?
Evergreens can be 17 feet tall. And the deciduous trees, which will be mixed trees, will be some are shady trees, some will be ornamental trees, flowering trees. They're gonna be the flowering trees, we have flowering trees will be 2 and 1/2, 2 and 1/2 inch caliber. And the deciduous trees are gonna be 3 and 1/2 to 4 inch caliber, which are a mid-size tree. So the height of the deciduous trees will be 15 to 16. Also, this is a mixture of evergreens with some ornamentals and some deciduous trees mixed in. And there's simply in the back here, these are gonna be all evergreen trees, a lot of evergreens on the back. At the parking lot, we try to get some vegetation, as best we could inside the parking lot. The side, we're just doing the demands, parking demand, you know, we're, it's limited playing at this.
Steve, there's no trees there now at the edge. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 trees existing here, 4 trees here, and then 1 tree here. That won't worry you.
And how many trees will there be? I mean, about?
In total?
Oh, total? About 30, 30 deciduous trees, 47, 47, 47, about 55 evergreen trees.
Steve, just to verify, you said 30, 47, 55, and 22 of them?
Okay. Excuse me? The total trees of 30, 47, and 55 are? 30, 47, no, 30, 47, and 9.
So the 47 and 9 are all evergreens, is what you're saying?
And also, in addition to the evergreens, which we're gonna get, we're, there's- Another 45 shrub, evergreen shrubs, they're gonna get from anywhere from 12 to 16, 15 of them all. So it's gonna be a layer effect in terms of-
And the deciduous, how tall are they getting?
Maples. The ornamentals, they're gonna be pears, cherries, they'll be 25 and 12.
How many of those are between the houses and the, the building?
14, the pricey and viburne and vibrosupra, green giants and white spruce. And then these are gonna be the viburne, which are probably going to be-
Is that everything there, Steve?
Uh-
Presentation-wise? I mean, presentation-wise?
Yeah.
Okay. Board, any questions?
I have a question.
I just want to add something. Um, when we moved into the property, when my daddy was there, this parking lot had a fence. There was a fence there, because his twin was right from there. So we had some problem, you know, basically, on the side.
Well, there's actually an existing fence here.
No, 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 not on the side.
This side here, there's also an existing fence.
No, no, not on the side.
You're almost all the way around. Keep it going.
There's, there's an existing fence actually walking along.
If I'm gonna be in the right, if I'm gonna be in the right, this is close to, um, on the lake, around here, there was a fence there. This is on the other side, I say, house here, right? Yeah. Yeah, so on this side, there was a fence here. My daddy's twin was so married out here, there was a fence and he was there.
Well, there's an existing fence also here.
So actually, that would have been internal anyway to the property.
So Chairman, for the record, when we appeared before the planning board, some of the fence was encourting and it was stockade. It's a very bad shape and everything. And with a discussion with your engineer and the attorney, it was decided it's better that we should remove the fence because it's not, it's not a safety fence. It's more of a hanging in there, some of them like in a rotten piece and everything. And we had to really take the picture and show that, you know, the, it is clear and it's safe.
Right.
They're saying we're taking that, the fences.
Yeah, I understand.
And proposed site does not propose any, any fences. So Chairman, again, thank you for the opportunity. But I really did like to make a comment that tonight, we are not seeking for any kind of approval.
Hmm.
It's because this project has to go to the ZBA. If the ZBA deny the project, the project doesn't go anywhere. So it's really our best interest to really go to the ZBA and let us give the opportunity just to show the alternative plan, the plan that, what is for the court and the plan that presented, that has a minimal impact and really more of a natural grade, that gonna be favorable to the, to the neighbor. That's gonna be something our goal and it's really- And it's really, if you could really allow us to go to the ZBA, and ZBA is not gonna entertain us because they need the neck deck, that's the code, all right? And that's gonna be really helpful for us to go to the ZB and then to come back to the planning board and make a decision, whatever you're gonna make a decision for.
Right, I understand.
You know, and, and just, just briefly, those, 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 uh, those comments from the neighbors, it's really what you're looking at, what is there now, but you should look at what is really gonna be when the project gonna be built. It is true, there is a drainage problem because of the topography now. Right now, it's like in the, the existing home sitting in the middle. And then it's kind of high side, half of the drainage goes to the back and half of them going to the front. The way it's been designed, you're taking majority, the majority of the drainage included the improvement for the parking lot and the building is going to the front, okay? And just for the record, I do drainage with a passion, okay? I've been practicing more than twenty years. So the drainage, when I do the design, I really do carefully and make sure that drainage is mitigated. And not only me, I have a great respect with John Roke. He's a senior engineer, we sat down and we said, that's the way to go. It's really improving the drainage. And the way it is designed, we're taking the roof drain, the parking lot drainage, put into the underground coltech system, which is infiltration practice. And we did the test hole, we did the, we did test hole all around the site and find out the suitable location that could really drain it, store it, recharge it, and then improve the drainage to the street and also the back neighborhood. Also, the parking lot, I forgot to mention, we did the porous asphalt. What it is, when the rain comes in, it absorbs all the water there. So that is a second way to really improve the drainage. This project is gonna be overdesigned for the drainage. So neighbor, nothing, they have nothing to worry about. The, the drainage they have at the back puddles, we know about it. It's gonna be nicely graded out and all the drainage issue will be resolved. Just briefly about the water connection, it is, could be a confusion because if you look at the village, they don't have the record for the, for the easement, for the existing water. So we had to go for the title search way back, I don't even remember, thirty or four, thirty, five years ago. We found there is a easement that goes to the rental road. Now the applicant have two options, either they could really do the connection to the orange turnpike or apply the existing drainage easement. So, excuse me, the water easement. So I spoke to John Roke and he said, well, the project is going for the SECA review. You should really look, in order for us to do the connection to the orange turnpike, you have to cut the road. If you don't have to, that's gonna be preferred method, not to cut the road and use the existing, whatever they're now, they have existing gravel road, all right? And, uh, and also maybe there's a confusion about the easement for the sewer and the drainage. The very preliminary plan had proposed a gravity connection that is going to the back of the neighbor property. And Rebecca's property could be a easement to be proposed. And it was clear from the neighbor that they don't wish to, you know, give the opportunity for the easement. So the plan has been changed. So there's no gravity connection, it's a, it's a, it's a pump station that we put in there. And everything is going to the orange turnpike. We are not touching the neighbor existing easement, everything move away. And, and pretty much, I, oh, the traffic count, the last one. We have this Steve Tarabaki. The way he did the traffic count, he did on the pick, which is a Friday weekly prayer. And that's the way traffic history has to be. You have to pick a day that has the peak traffic. You don't really go as a low traffic, it's more of a, that, then that restart, you're not gonna be acceptable. Steve, for the record, did you study on Friday's prayer?
Yeah, Friday, on Friday.
Yeah, do you wanna add something, like, you know, how, and, you know, how?
No, other than what you said, it's typical on your, of your busy hour. Right, typical study.
Yeah. So the study was. And just so the public knows, we have our own consultants that review all of that. So we have traffic consultants, we have everybody, so, so they're gonna look at it and make sure that it's all.
Correct, correct. So they looked at it, they, they found that it's studied to be acceptable with the condition that the planting plan has to be addressed, make sure the side distance doesn't really make any blockage and see how steep is the plan according to what has been recommended from Kim Hall. All right? So, uh, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Once again, uh, so we are here to listen for you.
Okay, thank you. So really, it's, it's, the question is a matter of fact, do we, you know, issue that to go before them? So I'm gonna turn to you, Dave, and ask, is there any reason that it can't be done or shouldn't be done? Are there outstanding issues on your, your side?
So, as you might remember, we had discussed the review memo that I had provided back on May thirteenth and outlined some technical comments that were regarding the sewer report that was provided by the design engineer and SWIP report, drainage report that was provided by the design engineer. There's some technical comments for them to address. I don't think there was anything that was out of the ordinary, however. And also, today provided another review letter that outlined the site plan. And again, there are fairly minor technical items at this point. We've wanted from the plans with the design engineer over the course of the last several months. So we've kind of gotten down to, you know, sort of fine details and comments on the, in the memo. So, no, I don't have anything on my end that would, I think that would prevent it at this point.
And Elise?
No, um, the ZBA can't act until a negative declaration is issued. My only question would be, um, I am a little bit confused about the two plans, but.
That's why the, that's why the ZBA has to see it. Because this is the plan that was showed tonight. This one that's up on the board is if the ZBA gives a variance. If they don't give the variance, that building goes to the front of the property on the roadway.
So then, the negative declaration would be for this plan?
Yes.
Okay, and if the ZBA denies the variance?
They gotta come back?
They gotta come back and we have to supplement SECA, is that correct?
Yes.
Right, okay. So then my only question would be, I don't know how you normally do it, do you issue a negative declaration and ask your attorney to draft it?
No, we have the draft first. I didn't see one from Elizabeth, that's why we need.
I don't have it, I don't have a draft negative declaration.
So, then I, then we can't do it tonight. Because that has to be a resolution voted on to come in. And there would be a reason that Elizabeth didn't do it, I'm guessing too, because we have resolutions for other things.
Yeah.
And potentially because also the public meeting, you never know how it's gonna go. You don't know what's gonna come out of that. And if we leave it open for comments, I don't think we need to. Board members can differ with that, but I don't think we need to. Because I think everything that was said tonight, we've heard most, I think there's a few items that we, you know, we'll look at and discuss. But typically, we, we, we don't do that, we've never done that.
Then you could authorize your attorney to draft the negative declaration for review and possible approval at either a workshop or the, whatever the next, whatever your normal.
Yeah, we could, you know, yeah, we could do that. And we would certainly have, have Elizabeth do that, you know, to.
So tonight, you could do a motion to authorize the drafting.
Yes.
Declaration.
Yeah, and that might be sufficient for, you know, the ZB. I'm not sure if it is or not, but, you know, I don't know what their rules are for that. So I don't, I don't see a problem with that unless anybody else has an, an issue for that.
I think if you wanna get Elizabeth back and get the declaration drawn in, see what it says, actually.
Yeah, oh, she's away now anyway, so she's not gonna do it. You know, oh, she's away.
Did you wanna get up to that?
Well. Yeah, you could, you could do it from there, so.
Um, quick question, is this a proposed neighborhood or community house of worship?
It's a community.
Community, okay. And I'm curious, I would love to check in the town code, the requirements for trees per parking space. Is that code right now as shown? Do you guys know? It says, you know, so many trees per four spaces or things like that.
I'm not sure what the code would be on the trees.
Yeah, we can check that. I don't know, I know we reviewed the, we took a look at the landscape, but I don't know, we actually counted against what the code, the code might require. I have to take a look at that.
They're proposing by the thirty feet in height of buildings. Are they going to sink that building, is the, is the building going to be thirty feet from like where the house is now?
So it's a good question. So if this plan, right, if this plan doesn't go through, it's from grade, whatever the grade is. So, so, right, if you're putting it on the front of that lot, that's gonna be much higher.
Yes.
Right?
So, so my, I'm just envisioning, right here, this is my property line. So thirty feet high with a seven or eight foot tree here.
So there's a drop off, but, and you could maybe speak more to that, Brian, because I don't have the plan right in front of me. I know there's a drop off and it's lower.
Building.
The building, so.
Quick question, what you see in the existing building that finished floor, that proposed building, finished floor is seventy-seven, or is it seven point three that we're hoping for? So if you're, if you're thinking full about four feet of the height, what are you looking at now?
Can you say it again, Brian?
It's gonna be four feet lower.
It's gonna be four.
The finished floor for the existing building, what you see is seven twenty-seven and the proposed building is gonna be four feet lower, the main level. And on the main level, it's gonna be thirty-six feet tall.
So thirty-two coming up?
No, thirty-six.
No, no, but it's, it's four feet lower than.
Exactly, four feet, actually less.
Right.
And we apply to the ZBA is the height up to forty feet because there is a confusion about the definition of the height. When they adopted a new code, they tend to, not to put information for the capital Y. So that ZBA is looking at it. So when we, when the ZBA, they kind of direct it out just to make it two point, to make a determination which one they're gonna really go for the variance as far. We believe, just to, you know, since the neighbors here, if really I help them to make a decision or kind of like determine what they're looking at there. This is often the plan, this plan that meets the code. What it is, you're really being the building to the front. It's gonna be more exposed, that's number one. Number two, the whole parking lot to accommodate what is needed is to the back. If you look at the parking lot, it's really dropped down about twenty feet. You have to raise up the whole top right, put that king wall and do that drainage, because the drainage, there is no connection for the drainage to the back end of property, okay? And, and then we are able to the light of code. It's gonna make a step in, even though you're gonna just make it a monkey down, but it's making a far way, you're gonna see. So when we look at the whole aspect to see what is really not, what's not good for the applicant, what is really, what is good for the neighbor. If I'm living there, wake up in the morning, look at it, it's maintaining wall, it's like, it's like it's in the neighborhood. So we really recommend that plan, what, because it's really worth the natural grade. At the back, it's maintaining wall, it's natural that you're there. If this thing free, how many would save? We saved it, we saved twelve of them. In addition, we provided many more trees as many possible just to provide a screening. You don't put too many trees, because they can subvert and it's not gonna work, okay? That's when we have the, the edge programs department, you can see what you could do for the neighbor. So the ZB gonna look at both plan and make a determination, what is really impacted the neighbor, neighbor, the factor of the neighbor. What is really the, any impact, or is it impacted for the neighbor? And then make their decision on the ground. So, uh, at the direction, I mean, in the plan, I really want the neighbor to show what we're looking at. So you have two choice now, to really support a project that really works with the minimum impact, record variance, or go for a plan that either code, but it's really gonna change the neighbor.
Hmm.
I, I just took a look at your meeting schedule, um, and you have a workshop on June tenth. So if you authorize your attorney to prepare a night deck for your consideration at the workshop on June tenth, we can still make the meeting that you're scheduled for at the ZBA on the eleventh.
I understand.
Thank you.
And chairman, for the record, this project, when we came from, you know, going back on the whole, the time is really big, huh? And the existing structure is right now is beyond repairable and time is vast. And we, we had a really a broken meeting between our attorney, your engineer, Elizabeth Cassidy. We sat down, we, we discussed about what it means from Chinese and try our best to resolve it. We made the deadlines, I actually have my staff coming over, so we can make sure that we really make a deadline. We really need that, go back to the ZBA, because the ZBA is not gonna make a change, you couldn't have a neck deck. And neck deck is not approved, it's just a referral, and then something will come back. If the ZB disappreciate the project, there's no point in the project.
No, I understand.
So, but thanks Amy, that's, that's the one, if you predict a proposal, or support a meeting.
So, yeah, there's a workshop on the tenth, so they authorized this to prepare a night deck for their consideration at the workshop on the tenth. Assuming they accept that and issue it, then we can still go to the ZBA on the eleventh and not have to pay the cost for another one.
Okay, good, all right. So we'd appreciate if you could do that, you know?
I understand. Yep, I understand. It's really a word, you know, discussion wise, so. How do you guys feel about that, about, you know, make deck or authorize this to do that? Or are you comfortable with her coming back into town?
I think, I think it should be done because this way, it's not a waste when we get to the ZBA and a decision will be made one way or another.
Right, on which, on which version?
They need direction.
That makes sense. What do you think, Phil?
I, I just, I mean, there are these decent considerations that Mr. Higgins has raised. Monitor, protect most of the guard, and we don't have Elizabeth here. Can we send her, you have something on, if you'd like to do that?
Well, we can authorize her to do it. In the meantime, we can still look at questions and so forth. It's, we, we can authorize her to draft it, not to do it, it's gonna be approved.
Yeah.
Yeah, if there's still more questions, we can just hold it at that time.
Marilyn?
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with approving the draft, but, you know, we, it may not meet, you know, like you say, at the discussion and, and, you know, something definite and right from our professionals saying this is okay. No, you know, as far as SECA goes, that there are, that SECA's, because we're saying SECA's been addressed. And just wanna make sure that it has been in.
Right, and that's why I think authorizing is not our vote yet.
Yeah, no.
So we, we still need to, to vote on it.
Yeah, we have to.
So, um, I don't know that it helps a lot that, you know, to do that in a sense, but authorize it unless the, you're thinking that the zoning board is gonna then know that we're, we're thinking that. Because if anything comes up between now and then that we're looking at, and there were all the comments from tonight, that could be, that could hold that up. Not that it would.
It's just, this is just pushing it a little bit further down the field. It would be appreciated by the applicant. And there's a possibility that we can make the meeting, they know that they are waiting for a neck deck. So we've been there already.
We'd also, also have to make, because the workshop, you know, a lot of conduct any business at that, so we'd have to make it into a special meeting.
Well, I don't know.
Is, is what would have to happen to.
With our, with our.
With what?
With the word like now, weren't we?
To do that, no, we can, forty-eight hours out, we can decide that. So, any, any thoughts from the board? The big question for us, Ryan, so you know, is that authorize a neck deck without our normal attorney, that's, that's us saying that seeker process is satisfactory. And, you know, even not hearing from Ted, I think is, is, is something that we'd like to do. But, you know, if, if it helps speed the process in a sense of, you know, it's not authorizing, we're not voting on it tonight. It's just telling Liz, let's get the draft of a resolution prepared, right? So, and then we can make the decision, um, even like you said, 48 hours out from that meeting, uh, whether to call a special meeting so we can vote on it, or, or not, you know, uh, we can do that. So, I don't have a problem with it for that, for that reason.
No, it's just speeding things along a bit, and frankly, it's a big project, I'm not sure, you know, we need to speed things.
Yeah, I think the, the bigger thing it helps is, is which version are, are we going to end up voting on, that's, that's the piece, so. And you're saying whether it's this month or next.
Yeah.
You know, it's not a big deal, but I don't think it, um, no, what's, what's anybody else then? Joe?
I'm looking to authorize a way to put together the negative deck.
Okay.
And then we take it from there. That's for either work session, 48 hours before that, or the special meeting, and we'll talk about it then.
I would say email Elizabeth, and actually see what she has to say, too.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and, and maybe.
I don't think she's going to answer this week, because she's really out of touch this week.
Yes, but, you know, she's.
What I don't want to see is just procrastination.
No, I don't think we're procrastinating.
Okay, I'm glad you moved forward.
I get it, but you don't want to move forward without your counsel either.
Mm-hmm, yes, I understand, but we want Liz to put together the negative deck, she'll be with us.
Yeah, I'm not worried, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it, yeah, I'm fine with it. Keith?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, I'm fine with just waiting for Elizabeth to, to get ahold of it, and then go from there.
Okay, so then we can make a motion to authorize, uh, council to draft a resolution to be voted upon, um, at the next available opportunity, which could be the 11th or the following. So, anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Member Ryan Nucci, and second motion?
I'll second.
Member Allen, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Extentions?
All opposed.
Uh, who opposed? You're opposed, Fred's opposed. Okay, the motion carries, so we'll do that, discuss it, and, uh, if everything's appropriate, when we do that, we'll move it forward.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Sharon.
Good night, everyone, enjoy your evening.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks.
We have a few more items on the agenda.
Thank you, have a night too.
Good night, have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, so just to move our, our meeting along here. 44 Highlandia.
Hi, my name is Joel Dresner, um, I'm just the designer.
Give us, give us your name again, so loud, they just said.
Joel Dresner, J-O-E-L, D-R-E-S-D-N-E-A.
Great, Joel, thank you. Um, so, we'll, we'll, it'll calm down in a minute, but, uh.
No problem.
So.
I hear.
Yeah, and I think we're, we're ready here, so before, let me just get a couple things out, out of the way on our side for you. So Dave, you had some. So what we're going to ask you is, I know you had comments.
Which project is this for?
Forty, this is 44.
Yeah.
And, uh, so we want to talk about that, so I'm going to turn it to you at this point, uh, just to address the applicant on those things.
So, did you receive a copy of our comment set?
Yeah, yeah, I have.
Okay, so there was a question about the floor area ratio.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I have the calculations.
Okay.
So it's, it's, the, the property is 5,632 square feet. And it's multiplied by 0.27, so that's 1,521, that's the FAR that's allowed. So, the footprint is 1,400 square feet, so the basement is unfinished, the first floor is 1,400, and the rest, um, 120 will be within the attic space.
So there's no second story?
No, no, just the one story.
So we would ask that, that calculation and that, and a clarification and confirmation that there is no, uh, second story?
Right.
And that the basement's unfinished, to be on the map?
So you want to add it to the, to the, to the bulk table?
Add a, add a note to that to show how that was calculated, and that, that proposed includes with the FAR, uh, you know, the maximum.
Okay, so, so I will, uh, my engineer will revise it accordingly.
Okay.
And the, the second thing, too, um, I know our attorney had mentioned that there's some addresses that needed to be changed on the application.
Yes, so he, um, she asked me to send in some owner's information, I sent it in, um, with the comments that was the address.
I sent it in.
I got the updated address, I didn't, I was unclear if Elizabeth wanted him to redo all the forms.
I asked.
She wanted, she wanted every one of the forms read, huh?
I wasn't there, so.
I, I asked her, I asked her if she want, if she wants, um, I should, um, do it on the application, so she said that I should just send it in, and that's all.
Yeah, she sent an email clarifying, but you didn't send the address.
The right address, and this is what I sent them.
All right, well, since you guys redo the floor ratio, we'll just check with her anyway, so we'll just, we'll find it out quickly now.
The second comment was, um, um, yes, so, so regarding, so, regarding a note that, um, has to be revised.
Yes. Dave, it has to be revised with the new calculation.
Yes.
And then is that the, is there a site plan there on that one? Does it have to be put onto the plan, is that what you're saying?
What do you mean site?
It has to be revised on the site.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
May I ask a couple questions?
Yes.
Um, so the basement, um, is there, and, and I apologize because I'm filling in for Liz, so is there outside?
Access.
Access?
Yes.
And it, and what kind of windows are in the basement?
So, it will be, um, some, the front is exposed.
I'm sorry.
Uh, what kind of, of, um, windows?
Yeah.
So it will be, um, ca, front will be casement, and the back will be some double hung.
And how tall is the basement, um, ceiling?
Nine feet.
Nine feet, okay. And there's no intention to use the basement for anything other than storage?
No, it's just unfinished, no.
Okay, so then I would suggest, as a condition of approval, that a notice put on the plan, and in the approval, that it's unfinished. It's nine foot ceiling, and, um, uh, and, and that's the representation.
Right, okay, yeah, I agree. Any other questions from the board? Or comments? Nope? Okay, so you have a little bit of homework?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, regarding the third comment, um, that there, um, needs to be, um, approved from the county regarding, on the connection, so there is a, a existing connection from the previous house, so it's, it's, uh.
I believe the plan shows a new sewer connection on the road, is it not?
Oh, yes, it shows, mm-hmm. So they will leave us, I guess they have.
It was, it just says six inch sanitary sewer service. There's a clean out shown, and an invert given at the sewer line.
Mm-hmm, okay, so.
The answer, it doesn't say proposed or existing, so, I assumed it was proposed.
Mm-hmm, okay, so we revise it, and say that, that we use the existing.
Only if it's there and.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Then you have the, uh, have Larry make sure that's shown clearly on the plan then.
Okay. And the fourth one, okay, the fourth comment is just a, um, Larry has to, um, add on a detail on the plan?
For the, that's for the curb stop, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so, we'll revise it accordingly. So there is, there then, will you vote today, or I will have to, uh?
It's got to be on, you have to resubmit the plan with the changes.
Okay.
And then I'll get clarification from the attorney, so by the time you're back with us, we'll have that as well, if there is any clarification needed, whether you have to fill out, refill out the, the forms, or just if that was good enough.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we have, uh, 30 Carpenter.
Evening, board members, council.
Evening.
We're getting to know you. Yeah, hopefully, that's a good thing.
Dave?
Yes.
We're looking at 30 Carpenter, have, uh, were all comments, were all of your comments satisfactorily addressed by the applicant?
Yes, I had reviewed what was submitted and provided a review letter earlier today. I believe the information, the submission came in just, I think, late last week, um, so I reviewed it today, provided a letter indicating that, um, the plans have been sufficiently, um, have been revised to sufficiently address our comments.
Okay, and, um, Elise, anything?
Uh, my notes from Liz say that this is a continuation of the public hearing for 30 Carpenter. Is that correct, it has not been closed?
I was hoping for a draft resolution.
Did, did Liz say that? Okay, so, yes, it is, so we need to, uh, then vote to close the public meeting on this. So, I guess we'd have to open it, we have to close the one we're in.
Which one?
Open it, no.
Oh, we have to.
Do it again. Yeah, I didn't realize that was an open meeting.
I'll make the motion, uh, close the meeting.
Okay, you need a second to close the meeting, one second. Okay, and, uh, actually, yeah, okay, and then, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, now we need a motion to reopen the, the public meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, member Ryan Nucci, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, now we need to reopen the regular meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Member Kelly, and second?
I'll second.
Okay, member Allen, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was fun. All right, so, uh, public meeting is now closed for that, and, uh, with that, and if you're satisfied, Dave, um, I know Elizabeth has prepared a resolution in case everything was satisfied, and, uh, I'm just going to ask, um, unless anybody has any other questions. Okay, so I'll, I'll ask, uh, Elise to read the resolution into the record, and then we can vote.
Okay, so Liz, um, prepared a special permit as well as.
Yes.
A resolution to a, a, amend, approve the amended site plan and special permit.
I think it's all in one.
It's actually two.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, um.
I'm still in one.
I don't know that it matters which way we go first, but let me read the resolution, the omnibus resolution first, okay? Village of Monroe Planning Board Resolution to Approve the Amended Site Plan and Special Permit Application of Harcone's Valley LLC, 21263, that's the SBL. Whereas the Village of Monroe Planning Board has received a site plan and special permit application of Harcone's Valley LLC for the purpose of expanding an outdoor dining area in connection with the existing restaurant use. Whereas the planning board has received and considered the following, the application signed July 2023, short form environmental assessment form dated July 21, 2023, site plan prepared by David Namaco Architects PC dated June 15, 2023, last revised April 29, 2024, consisting of two sheets including C dash one site plan and C dash two construction details, comments by planning board engineer, building inspector, planning board attorneys, and public comments in response of the applicant. Whereas the planning board declared itself to be lead agency on November 28, 2023, and has determined this is an unlisted action pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And whereas a duly notice public hearing was held on April 8, continued on May 28, 2024, and closed on May 28, 2024. Whereas after consideration of all the materials and comments before it, the planning board declared that this action will not have an adverse environmental impact for the reasons set forth in the written negative declaration dated January 25, 2022, incorporated herein as if set forth at length, now therefore be it resolved. After consideration of all the materials and comment before it, the planning board has determined the project will not result in an adverse environmental impact. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants site plan approval and special permit subject to the following terms and conditions. The terms of the special permit, um, shall be incorporated as if fully set forth herein at length. Two, the planning board chairman is hereby authorized to sign the site plan after the following has occurred. A, applicant to address the May 9, 2024 comment memorandum of the planning board engineer. B, applicant to obtain the approval of the village board trustees for payment in lieu of parking for nine parking spaces pursuant to, uh, 200 dash 35. C, applicant to pay all fees. D, confirmation by village engineer and planning board attorney that the final site plan conforms to the terms of this approval resolution. Applicant to obtain all permits. Four, prior to the issuance of the building permit, applicant shall, A, cause a New York state licensed land surveyor to flag the property identified, identified by the boundary lines. Five, applicant to commence construction within one year pursuant to 200 dash 72 F of the Village of Monroe Village Code, and the applicant may request an extension. Six, applicant shall not permit cooking implements to be located outdoors. Seven, applicant to remove all encroachments identified on the plan. Eight, all landscaping as shown on the landscaping plan shall be maintained in perpetuity. Nine, the improvements shall conform to the renderings as submitted by the applicant, annexed here too.
Okay, we need a motion and a second and a vote, and then I will also read into the.
So that included the, the special permit in here?
Uh, it's, it's a separate, it's a separate.
To read in?
Yeah, and I will read it in, do you?
Before we, yeah, just before we move forward, though, um, I just want to see if we could just add, um, the other code, it just, it doesn't tell us from the village code, and I thought that, and then the other one does, so in, uh, 2B, it says 200 dash 35, should, I think, say of the village, um, of Monroe, uh, code, just like, uh, number five says.
Sure.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, I just add a couple of revisions to that resolution. I believe when Elizabeth drafted this, she probably didn't have the latest, latest plan set that came in. So the last revision date of the plans in, in number three at the top of that resolution.
Mm-hmm.
Last revision date should be May 24, 2024, consisting of three sheets, including.
Wait a minute, May what?
Sorry.
Twenty four.
May 24th of 2024.
And there's a three sheets?
Three sheets, and sheet C two is the lighting plan, and sheet C three is the construction details.
Okay.
And I had one other question as it relates to the resolution. One of the items she had on there was all landscaping as shown on the landscaping plan shall be maintained in perpetuity. Now, the site plan that we have doesn't show landscaping, um, my assumption is that the original site. Now, the site plan that we have doesn't show landscaping. My assumption is that the original site plan, because this is an amended one, the original site plan does show the landscaping.
So it should be on there, right?
It's not on this plan. I'm assuming it's on the original site plan. So I don't know if we want to have it shown on this plan.
I think so.
Okay, so then that would be something that we would want to see.
Okay.
So that would be added to this plan?
To this site plan, yeah. So then the revision date of that plan is probably going to change.
Okay, so instead of all landscaping as shown, I'll say landscaping, landscaping plan should be added to this site plan.
The note should be kept in perpetuity.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the statement, but maybe you should.
To be shown on the plan.
Yes.
Or you want to add it as C-4?
On plan as C-4? Or is that a different?
Yeah.
It's a different.
I think.
No, it wouldn't be a different page. C-4 would be its own page. It wouldn't be that.
Yeah.
Usually it's not a C, right?
No, it's just a note on the plan.
They can call it whatever they want, and it's up to them whether they want to show it on a plan that's already been submitted or if they want to provide a separate sheet to that set. However they want to present that, we'll review that.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm thinking right now I'll probably add it to the lighting plan, make it a lighting and landscaping plan. So it'll be C-2.
And you're going to be adding that to the lighting plan?
Yep.
Okay. All right, let me then read the, if that's it, let me read the special permit into the record. This special permit is issued to Harcones Valley LLC for the construction of an outdoor dining patio, retaining walls and trellis in connection with an existing restaurant located at Thirty Carpenter Place, subject to the planning board's special permit procedures and regulations as set forth in the Village of Monroe Code, Article 7, Section 200-48, et cetera. Findings: The board determines after review of all the application materials, consultant comments, and public comments that the applicant owner has satisfied the findings required by the Village Code, Section 200-48.2. In particular, one, the location and size of the use, the nature and intensity of the operations, and traffic involved in or conducted in connection with it, the size of the site in relation to it, and the location of the site with respect to streets giving access to it are such that it will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it is located. Two, the location, nature, and height of buildings, walls, and fences, and the nature and extent of the landscaping on the site are such that the use will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of the adjacent land and buildings. Three, operations in connection with any special use will not be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of noise, fumes, vibration, or other characteristics that would be the operation, then would be the operations of any permitted use not requiring a special permit use. Four, parking areas will be of adequate size for the particular use, properly located, and suitably screened from adjoining residential uses. And the entrance and exit drives are laid out so as to achieve maximum safety. Five, existing municipal facilities are adequate for the proposed use. Six, the property will be suitably landscaped to protect the neighborhood and adjacent property in perpetuity. Based upon these findings, the planning board approves a special permit subject to the following condition: All landscaping as shown on the landscaping plan will be maintained in perpetuity. I'll make a change to it, so it's.
The wording is right.
The wording is consistent, yeah. Two, no outdoor cooking facility shall be permitted without further approval from the planning board. Three, applicant to comply with Chapter 145 of the Village of Monroe Code, noise. The village reserves the right to revoke or not renew this special permit in the event of violations. Four, this special permit will expire within one year of issuance of the certificate of occupancy pursuant to Section 200-48.4 of the Village of Monroe Code.
Thank you, Liz. So we need someone to make a motion to, for approval of the, of both the site plan and the special use permit as amended and read into the minutes. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
One second. Member Allen and Member Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'm sorry, who seconded it?
It was Kelly.
Kelly. And who is absent today?
Paul Hefnecker.
Okay.
All right, and Thirty-Seven Still Road.
Yes.
Dave, are all the outstanding items they have addressed to your satisfaction?
Yeah, I know the answer that's today. We still need to, I think it was the eight-one-one note we need to add, as well as the construction entrance. He hasn't received those plans yet.
Yes, I believe so. We had, I think this is what we had two minor comments on.
Yeah.
That he had just mentioned, and no, we haven't. I haven't received the revised plans on that yet.
All right, so then we'll just push that one back.
Oh, is it, are those necessary to approve a resolution, or could that be conditional on that?
What was the outstanding?
So just to reiterate, so this was the, so these are the two comments that we had. I'm having trouble finding the new letter.
Is it your letter?
Yes.
I have it here.
It was May 13th. May 9th? May 9th, yes.
Do you want me to read the two things?
Sure, because I can't seem to put.
So the comments on the plans provided: The proposed stabilized construction entrance is shown at the end of the existence paved driveway. The design engineer should consider relocating the stabilized entrance to an area that will minimize damage to the existing driveway. Secondly, plan should include reference to UDIG New York or NY to ensure that any existing utilities are properly located and marked in the field prior to excavation. Those are the two comments?
Yes. And those are, I mean, pretty minor. I mean, adding the UDIG note is pretty simple. And the other one, it was a recommendation on our part. I don't think, I think you're agreeing to change the location of the temporary driveway, construction entrance?
Okay, so we can make a conditional then?
Yes, and I believe Elizabeth did provide a draft of a resolution.
She did. I'm just wondering, did she put that in there?
Says the condition is applicant to address the comments as set forth in the memo.
Right, so, so we have to insert any additional desired conditions, right?
Yes, any that you might have, but anything that I had was covered in item number one there, condition number one.
Applicant to address the comments. Oh, as a condition, I see what you're saying. Okay. Any other conditions that anybody else has? So the conditions, well, I'm going to have, Elise, you're going to read it in for us.
Sure. Village of Monroe Planning Board Resolution to Approve the Site Plan Application Shakima Check, Thirty-Seven Still Road, SBL 222-1-9. Whereas the Village of Monroe Planning Board is in receipt of an application for site plan approval pursuant to Section 200-68D1, and I'm going to add of the Village of Monroe Village Code. Whereas the planning board has received and considered the following: One, application signed March 20, 2024; short form environmental assessment form dated March 25, 2024, last revised.
I don't, I looked at the file. I did not see any revised EAF having been submitted, at least not on my notes.
Probably just a typo. Plot plan prepared by David Namaco Architects PC dated May 9, 2023, last revised April 25, 2024. Comments of the village building inspector, village engineer, and planning board attorney. Whereas the planning board has determined that this is a type-two action pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and no further environmental review is required. And whereas the application does not require a public hearing, and the planning board has elected not to hold a public hearing, now therefore be resolved that the village planning board grants the proposed lot line change and site plan approval subject to the following conditions. One, applicant to address the comments as set forth in the memos of David Higgins, P.E. of Langton Tully Engineering, dated May 9, 2024. Two, chairman shall be authorized to sign the plat upon confirmation from the village engineer and the village planning board attorney that all outstanding conditions have been satisfied. Three, applicant to pay all fees. Four, applicant to maintain, to obtain all permits.
So just a quick question, Elise or Dave, when it says be resolved, it grants the proposed lot line change.
Is it a lot line change?
Because that's what got right in.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't.
That can't be right, because that's not us. That's the zoning board.
It should just be the site plan.
Okay, so I'll strike that.
Good catch, Jeff.
I'm not sure the zoning board would feel warm fuzzies over that. So really, Elise, it just has to say something about approving the site plan subject to the following conditions?
Right, I've taken out lot line change. Grants the proposed site plan approval.
Yes. Okay. And, all right, so the, the motion is for approval of the resolution as amended to approve the site plan for Thirty-Seven Still Road, and we need a motion for that.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Member Kelly made the motion, second?
Second.
Member Alberto, second, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Done.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a good night.
And we just need now a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. Awesome.
Member Kelly, followed by Member Allen, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, thank you very much.